Okay, so it's 7:03, July the 15th, GBOS regular meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 4462-310 and AMC 125, public meetings. I'm chairing. Mike Edgington, land use supervisor, and on my left...
Erin Moon, fire supervisor.
And on my right...
James Oliver, roads and utilities.
Jerry Fox, public safety.
Christina Hendrickson, parks and recreation.
And does anybody have any disclosures? I suspect one.
Well, there's an item on the agenda talking about short-term rentals on the community, specifically at Echo Ridge, I live on Echo Ridge, so just throwing that out there.
My ruling is it's not a substantial conflict. Does anyone disagree? Okay, not hearing any objection, we rule that it's being not substantial conflict, so you can stay to the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, this is my first time chairing, so if I get too quiet, for those of you at the back of the room, if I get too quiet or my accent gets too strong, just wave, shout me down. Agenda revisions and approval, tonight's regular meeting agenda. Look over and have you got any changes?
I'm going to approve the agenda with no amendments.
Second.
All for a vote? Okay. June 17th, 2019, GBOS regular meetings minutes approval.
I'd like to make a motion for an edit.
Okay.
Page four. Item 12, bonding plans four. I would like to replace fire breathing apparatus to capital replacement needs for the Girdwood Fire Department.
Fire breathing apparatus, it sounds like we're buying a dragon.
I think she puts them in there just to see whether or not we actually read them. That's my motion.
What did you want to change again?
Capital replacement needs for the Girdwood Fire Department.
Any other comments?
Make a motion to approve the... Oh, second. Your amended. I was going to say I was going to make a motion to approve the amended.
It's not amended, I must be mistaken.
Okay, let's, we will have a quick vote on the amendment. Anyone agree on that?
Sure.
Right. So we now have an amended set of minutes. We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the June 17th minutes with the amendment.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Next, we move on to the June 17th, 2019, GBOS and Girdwood Fire Rescue Semi-A annual Joint Meeting Minutes.
Sub move.
Second.
Actually, I'm just going to have a quick answer because I didn't...
I did not find any fire breathing apparatus.
Okay. Now for all the votes.
I sub move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Right announcements. Public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please take side conversations into the foyer. Municipality and GBOS quarterly meeting is Monday, July the 29th at 12:00 p.m. in Anchorage City Hall, on the 8th floor conference room. I think this is the mayor's conference room. GBOS budget sessions are scheduled as follows. Budget work session one, we had immediately before this meeting. Budget work session two will be before the muni meeting on July the 29th, 2:30 p.m. at Anchorage City Hall, 8th floor conference room. Budget work session three is Monday, August the 12th at 5:30 in Girdwood Community Room here, that's before our next GBOS meeting. Oh, sorry, the week before our land use meeting. The approval of budget is planned for Monday, August 19th at our regular GBOS meeting. We also have nonprofit grant presentations in September 18th, 7:00 p.m., and we're planning to vote on the GBOS grant allocations in our October regular meeting. We can now move on to introductions, presentations, and reports. Item one, Girdwood Valley Service Area declared as a secure trash regulation zone under AR 2019-234. And I think we have Mr. Chris Shute here to talk to that. Would you like to come and... Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm dressed non-professionally. I just got off of Winter Creek, but can't pass up an opportunity when I come down here. So there are two things to know about this particular item. The first is the underlying code changes that we worked very closely with representatives of GBOS and South Anchorage to produce. These are code changes related to what we're calling secure trash. And in particular, secure trash, what we're referring to is bear-resistant containers, an issue that's really important to Girdwood, but also very important to communities like East Anchorage, where I live, and others that are adjacent to Chigash State Park. As part of these code changes, the creation of what we're calling the secure trash regulation zones is essentially a two-step process. And the first step is the designation of an area, neighborhood or area, as a secure trash zone. And Girdwood was very interested, at least expressed by GBOS, was very interested in becoming that first area. Girdwood already has about a 95% participation rate in bear-resistant containers, as we've heard from Alaska Waste, which is very impressive. And so it seemed like a good fit. The reason that I think it's a good fit for Girdwood, at least as we've learned through our meetings with GBOS, is that you have an extremely high percentage of non-resident short-term guests, I guess we could call them, who may not have the same concepts of secure trash that we do. And so it's very important that there's a regulatory system in place that allows the municipality to ensure the safety of everyone who lives here year-round and have rules that can be enforced as it relates to those secure trash regulations. So I didn't bring copies of the ordinance, but is it back there on the table?
Yes.
Okay. There's copies of the ordinance back on the table. What's displayed right here is the public notice. So the second step of that two-step process is to actually designate, and we did that Tuesday, or I guess the assembly did that on Tuesday night last week, designating the Girdwood Valley Service Area as the first secure trash zone in Anchorage, and likely the only one this year, I think. The content of that declaration is included in the materials that were handed out in the back of the room. And of particular interest for you guys is the effective date of that, which is coming up quickly, I can't believe we're already in July, but August 5th is the secure trash date that the assembly designated for Girdwood. As part of the code changes and as part of this declaration, the municipality will be publishing notice in both the Glacier City Gazette and in the Daily News. I know not everyone, myself included, reads printed materials anymore, so we're going to rely a lot on the informal networks that GBOS and others have in this community to help spread that message. It's an important one, but I will also add that on behalf of code enforcement, we take a very proactive approach that stresses compliance before fines, so I don't think anyone should be fearful of fines right out of the gate, but we certainly do want people to be aware of the new law and aware of the implications of non-secure trash, so that we can combat this issue. Short of that, there's not a lot to present, but I certainly can ask questions, or you can ask questions and I can provide answers. I don't have much of a script, Mike.
Any questions from the board?
Besides having a bear-proof container, there's restrictions on when you can put them out?
Yeah, that's correct. Thanks, Jerry. That's a good point. So in the ordinance, you can see that there are requirements about not only placement of trash for pickup, but also the storage of your trash during the non-pickup times. And I understand that there's some concerns about one of the provisions of that code, which states that when not put out for pickup, the trash canisters or containers should be kept either in a garage or inside your residence, or at least a next door to it. A common place to store trash in Girdwood, I understand, is not necessarily directly next to the house, but sometimes it is to secure it to a tree, off the right-of-way, but nearby, so that you can haul it out when appropriate. I think that that, while that's not within the letter of the law, certainly in code enforcement's eyes, we look at that as complying with the intent of the law, so I don't think anyone has to worry about fines if you don't actually store your container directly adjacent to your home, but I think that's probably the only issue I've heard about so far. The trash pickup times for secure trash cans, or I'm sorry, the placement times are 12 hours in advance the day before, so if your pickup is typically on a Tuesday morning at 7:00 a.m., you can put it out Monday because you have the secure trash container. The code provisions also added some restraints on what time you can put out non-secure trash, but that won't apply in Girdwood since you are now a secure trash zone.
Thanks.
Hope that helps.
Yep.
Can you go over how to report a violation to code enforcement?
Yeah, absolutely. So if everybody's not already familiar with it, I highly recommend you get to know what we call the Anchorage Works or ANC Works online reporting tool. It's available on the homepage of the website, and I don't know who controls the PowerPoint, maybe Kyle, if you pull up the MOA's homepage, I can point it out. This is an online reporting tool. It works great on smartphones, too. I use it quite a bit. And it allows you to report code enforcement violations of any kind, whether it's an abandoned vehicle or a secure trash violation, et cetera. Scroll down a little bit. There's a button, keep going. There it is. Anchorage or ANC Works. It's a pretty simple form to fill out. It allows you to be as specific or vague as you'd like, including uploading photos of the violations that you're reporting, the location. I can't read that very clearly, but there's one on code enforcement.
Questions regarding trash service?
There we go. And it just requires the bare minimum of your personal information to submit a request. Your personal information is never revealed in complaints, but it is important for us on the enforcement side, so that we have a way to contact you to follow up on any issue, whether it's trash or otherwise. It allows you to punch in an address, or if you don't know the address, you can drop a GPS PIN in the app itself. So that's the way I recommend. There's also a telephone number, but if you have a smartphone, this is the smartest way to do it.
And if I may augment that, you can upload images and up to four megabytes. So if you have a short video or photographic evidence of the violation you see, that really helps with code enforcement.
Yep, absolutely.
And this applies to restaurants?
No. Well, it does, it does, but the dumpster service is a little bit different. The secure trash regulation zones do apply to both dumpsters, commercial dumpsters, and residential service, but I think the biggest impact will be felt by residents in that dumpster service already is largely bear-proof, or at least locked. Most containers are locked already. As far as put-out times for pickup, dumpsters are already out all the time anyway, so that shouldn't change anything for them.
But the fines are, I mean, it says all.
Correct. And I guess a case of a hypothetical example of a commercial dumpster where that violation would occur is if you start stacking bags outside of it, for example, not putting them in the dumpster. I can't think of another one. Michelle, Mike?
So during forest there was like a dumpster, a lot of donuts piled outside.
Oh.
And so would that have been a fine?
Absolutely. Yeah. And just not a good idea. Okay.
Not locking dumpsters, I think it's also fine.
They typically lock themselves, but absolutely, yeah, if you have a manual lock one, it's expected that it be locked.
But everybody has a lock.
What's that? Right.
But actually, there is a requirement, they do have to lock. So if you know dumpsters that do not lock, they should be actually changed out.
Yes, ma'am.
For those people who own houses here in Anchorage and like them, how are those people, how are you making that work out of the situation?
That's a good question. So the violations section of the code changes classifies both the person staying in the home and the property owner as potential violators, and more than likely, if we have an incident like that where you have a guest, we will notify the property owner. We have, you know, property records through the property tax division where we can notify people that they have now a fine or a violation.
Are you telling them in advance of this, though? Instead of just when there's a fine, are you telling them now?
Yeah, so the public notice portion of the secure trash designation is starting now. We're going to rely a lot on informal networks within Girdwood. We will publish it in both the Glacier Gazette and in the Anchorage Daily News. We probably should look at if there's a web presence or a web announcement, we could probably post that as well. It's going to be very difficult, honestly, to reach every single property owner, but we're going to do our best. Right, thank you, John. And Alaska Waste also is helping with this, since you guys are their customers. They have online announcements they can make, and I think they'll even do printed ones in robocalls.
Robocalls and emails.
Yes, sir. Wow. No kidding.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I know people sometimes often strap them to structures or to trees, because generally if they aren't going to get in, they require them to knock it down first.
Wow.
We just thought, knocked over.
Really? Sure. But you've actually seen them able to open the new ones after knocking it over.
It does require them to be closed properly. It's possible with the new ones to not close it properly. It's harder than the older ones, but it is possible.
Have you reported those violations?
I talked to fishing game and I talked to Alaska Waste.
So code enforcement is the ones I can actually find and do something about that. So fishing games for the bear issue is one thing, that's great, but there's still the issue of the homeowner that's responsible for that trash. I'm sorry.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much. I know you and your team put a lot of work into this, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. The next item, subcommittee reports. Three minutes each, we'll start with Trails Committee.
In the last Trails Committee, we actually had a work session out in the field, and we worked on Dev's Way, and we had about a dozen people show up, of all ages, which was great, and we did a lot of brushing, a bunch of drainage work, and installed some new culverts, which basically helped set up our two trail interns who worked to finish the trails. So if you haven't been over there on Dev's Way, we tried to improve it for all users, put some features in for mountain bikers and for hikers in there, so it's probably riding better than it has in a very long time. So we want to thank everybody who turned out that night and helped us, it was a really nice night, too.
Is the next meeting with Trails?
It will be a regular meeting in here, in the room.
Any questions on board? Anyone from the audience? Okay, now Land Use Committee.
Good evening, supervisors, everybody else out here, and everybody in radio land. Girdwood Land Use Committee held its regularly scheduled monthly meeting on July 8th. We had a brief meeting here. We received updates from the Girdwood Trails Committee via Kyle. We heard Girdwood area plan updates from Mike Edgington. Little Bear's rebuild project, a GBOS report from Mike. So basically, all of the updates that we'll be hearing tonight were covered at the Land Use Committee meeting. Then we had no old business on our agenda, first time I can remember that in a long time, so we breezed right into the new business. And we began with an introduction of the proposal to rename the Girdwood baseball field, and we'll be hearing more on that tonight, and look forward to hearing that come up this evening. And then we added one agenda item just as the meeting was starting, and this was the discussion of the short-term rental impacts on Echo Ridge Road, and we'll be discussing that topic here also this evening in depth, I'm sure. And then the Land Use Committee has three items of pending business that will be covered in future meetings. The recommendation for GBOS resolution of support for the change of Title 21, Chapter 9, related to commercial parking requirements. The resolution of support for dimensional variance request for 159 Aspen Mountain Road, we'll be hearing that at a future meeting. And we'll also in a future meeting be getting a second presentation of the Eliescan Nordic Spa Project. So those will be upcoming. Our next Land Use Committee will be on August 12th. It's the second Monday of the month, 7:00 p.m. Hope we see a big crowd there. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. So now we're on to legislative report. I see John, no one from the state.
Josh, too.
Oh, sorry, Josh.
Josh is the new Adam.
Josh is the new Adam. But Adam was the new Josh, wasn't he?
He was, that's right.
So Josh is the old Josh.
So anyway, hello, everyone. It is a wonderful thing to have a nice motorcycle in beautiful weather to ride down to Girdwood, and I've done it three times in the last five days, so it's nice to be here. I did something this morning, with a little group of people, and toured the Martin Luther King Fire that we had in Anchorage a week or so ago, was it a week ago? 10 days, and it was interesting, I mean, just to kind of, just to walk and see vividly what it looks like to see a place that was just burned, and you could see we were on a trail, completely burnt over here, not over here because of the way the wind went. You could see where the fire had jumped, certain areas, you know, 100 feet or so. So it is kind of sobering to watch that, because it could certainly happen here, I mean, you're much wetter than most Anchorage, but you know, the hillside is always in danger of having some kind of wildfire. And it was there with a group of people who are, again, very active on the hillside, looking at the situation there to get people more attentive to taking care of their homes, making them fire-wise, and also we're looking at different evacuation routes, what do we do? And there's a lot of one-way in and one ways out on the hillside, so it's nice to get a big group of people kind of attentive to it. So when we were in there, too, it was, they haven't said what the cause of the fire was, but you could see in there a number of places where there were campers, and that's a known place for camping, and where they had little fires, and it's frequent in these camps now where they're burning wires to get to the copper and selling the copper. And we just passed an ordinance that makes that illegal to buy copper that was in wire that was burned, so hopefully we'll kill that market. So it's dangerous as far as starting fires, but also the plastic burning is a very dangerous substance, so hopefully we'll minimize that. But you know, another thing that comes to mind, though, is when you think about these people in the woods, you know, we have people living in Anchorage who are so desperate that that's a reasonable thing to do, to go steal wires and burn them. And it's a scary thought to think that there's a lot of people like that. So anyway, we know that's a big issue in town, and we're working on it. We also have another very big issue that you've probably heard a lot about, Supportive Anchorage, which is essentially falling down. And we have a decision, and it's a tough one for the assembly, and I think the administration, really, all across the board, is what do you do with it? So an issue right now, and we have a decision to make on the 23rd, is do we build part of a petroleum and cement terminal trestle to get out there? We don't have enough money right now to finish it, or do we not? And I think for the administration's side is yes, we should, because we have the money now, the longer we wait, the value of that money diminishes, and we've got a bid now that was below what we expected it to be, so we should do that, and let's count on getting the money later on. I would not say that's an irrational point of view. The other side is port users are going, whoa, 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 whoa. We don't want to end up with a trestle to nowhere, we have other ideas, and we like time to hash them out. And it's, so it's frustrating, because I don't want to ignore what they think, or I think the administration's a bunch of super smart people, and ignore them at your peril. And it's frustrating, as often happens, the people who should be involved and should have been involved for a decade working on this, all of a sudden come in near the end of the game and say, whoa, 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 but that's the way it goes. I mean, the road projects, every project you do, trail projects, when do people get excited when you're out there doing it? How come I wasn't told? And they missed 30 meetings that you had. But that's a tough thing. It's a huge amount of money, and it's super critical for Anchorage, you know? If we have another earthquake, or if that port falls down, we're in big trouble. And this is one piece of kind of step-by-step improving that. So anyway, that's a big one weighing our minds. But really, as we all know, the very big issue right now is the state budget, and it's hitting the entire state all across the board. For Anchorage, it's gotten a lot of press that they're not repaying half of what they normally would for our school bonds, so that'll be an increase, couple hundred bucks for the typical house next year on property taxes, it's likely, but that's just one aspect. There's a lot of others, and some things are, that's an over-the-tax cap thing where we can increase the tax cap, but there's quite a number of things that are under the tax cap, which really mean a decrease in services. And that's a problem, because people might say you need less government, but all of them want more services, too. So I think we'll learn on Thursday, we have a budget meeting where we'll get a review of what the cuts were and how they'll be impacting the city. But it's serious business, it really transformed the state and also Anchorage. We've been in my four budgets I've been involved with, carrying the mentality that this day was coming, that the state's running out of money, we'll get less and less, and trying to become more independent, but we have not made the full switch. You know, there's still a huge amount of money that we get from the state that we count on. So anyway, and I would say on that, it was another case, a huge amount of people amazingly came out to oppose the governor's vetoes, and it's exciting to see that. I think a lot of people who had never been involved before were coming out very passionately, and we wish they'd come out five, 10, 15, 20 years ago, as we saw this coming, because we knew we'd been overspending for years. I mean, my friend Scott Goldsmith has been telling me for 30 years, telling all of us, here's a sustainable spending path, and we're up here. So this day, an ugly day was coming, and it just turned out to be, I think, uglier than it needs to be. So anyway, that's the big news. Any questions?
Question about the port. Is the military one of the port users that's coming to the table with all the solutions than the trestle? That they've been at the table the whole time?
I don't know that they've been talking about the trestle. They do use the port quite a bit. I think we said thousands of vehicles go back and forth every year, and most of their stuff, like everyone else's, comes up through the port, but they have not been forthcoming with money, though that could change, I don't, Chris might know. I mean, they're definitely, they're aware of the problem, I think they're concerned, and we are reaching in every pocket we can, and everybody, and it's, this is statewide port.
Yeah, it's strategic positioning for continued actions, especially if we're looking at potentially getting more Navy up here. Definitely encourage additional military engagement for the port.
Right, so, yeah, we all agree. Any other questions?
I have a comment just about the fire that you went to go see. I have a conservative friend who says he's anti-government everything. He said that was the greatest use of government he's ever seen. The quick response to that fire, and how fast they had people on it, and how fast they had the administration come up with, you know, people that came out and discussed and talked and communicated with people. He thought it was very well-coordinated, and for somebody who's kind of anti-government, it was a, he thought it was a very good response.
And it was, you know, it was the city, and state forestry, and the, I think, the hotshots, all the variety of groups were out there, because that's what they do. And I would say the city, I think, and the earthquake showed that, you know, it was a crisis situation, we came together, we did a great job. So I think people who, as I've gotten a little closer to them, I do say it's very expensive and can be very slow, it took us a long time to do it. it involves government. So I think my frustration hasn't diminished, but I'm much more sympathetic and understanding of the situation. But I think we have a good government. I think we are very frugal. You know, we have a tax cap that really does constrain what we do. There's a lot of stuff people really want us to do and that we should be doing, we can't because of that. So whoever, you know, we are very tight with our money in this city. And when we need to do good work, we do good work. And I say we, it's really the staff and employees, Assembly just does what we do. Anything else? Thanks. Josh?
Hi, my name is Joshua Spring. I'm really joyful that I got to get hired back as the Assembly aide for Suzanne LaFrance. I love the drive out here to Girdwood. I hope you can forgive me, I want to make this the first and only time I'm ever unprepared for this meeting here in Girdwood. I've been told to keep an ear open for anything related to fire safety as Assemblyman Weddleton was talking about. That was kind of a really, really big issue that came up. So while they're working on fire safety measures, if there's any input from the people of Girdwood about like what we need to do to improve that kind of thing, please let us know and we'll do our best. Adam gave me a very large box full of notebooks that he's been collecting since he first started this job till now. So I have a lot of studying to do. I can't believe how much paperwork that young man saved for me. But I'm going to read through all of it. And my plan is that by next time I see you guys, I'll be completely caught up on all the issues. But other than that, as an Assembly aide, it's kind of my job to be on the clock 24/7. So if you ever feel like you need to text somebody about stuff or call somebody about stuff or send an email to me, I can give you my contact information here now and if you wanted to like forward it to people too. I'm always available at 907-793-0087. I have a regular day job at a restaurant in downtown Anchorage. If you ever want to like stop by and chat me up about what's going on in Girdwood, I'd love to hear from you. That way it's not just once a month when I see you. My email is non-governmental, so it's spring.joshua.a@gmail.com. I don't know why I felt compelled there to say non-governmental, but I guess I did. At any rate, that's about all that I've got. Like I said earlier, I'm very joyful that I get to be back here and work with you guys. And I love getting feedback on this kind of thing. I've been in Assembly aide in some way, shape or form for the past like decade. So this is always kind of my go-to fun spot. So thank you so much for your time and I look forward to hearing more.
Any questions?
Any question, yeah. Okay. Thanks, guys.
So, next item, Girdwood Area Plan update. Nobody from the committee could make it, so they sent me minutes and asked me to read them. So I'll read this. So, the last meeting was on June 26th. I'll just go through this very quickly. There were various updates on initiatives in GBOS and land use. We received funding in the first quarter budget revision at the uni. We were granted $20,000 from Suzanne LaFrance primarily to, and John, many people voted for it, to fund the area plan. So typically, the planning work in the past used to be done by the municipality themselves. We formed this neighborhood group to basically push it forward ourselves. And they've given us some, they've been very generous actually in funding to help with the professional services around that. So we actually received the check and we've cashed it, I believe, so that was good. We also discussed the next steps. We have a, we're working on Phase 2 or we're planning Phase 2 of the area plan work. Phase 1 was mostly getting community feedback, generating a sort of community goal outline. And Phase 2 is then going into more details, looking at particular areas that people have brought up in the broad community and sort of working with stakeholders to go into that in more detail. And Phase 3 will be working again with the community to sort of fill out the remainder of the plan and sort of socializing it through the public process. We looked at land use maps, looked at all of the different zones we have under land use. We have lots of different commercial loan zones, lots of residential zones. There was discussion about why they were there and what potentially, if there's any potential simplification. This was just an initial look at the task, no decisions were made. The other big news was that Janice Crocker, used to be Vice Chair, she's resigned and Erin Eker has taken over as Co-Chair. So it's now Eric Fullerton and Erin Eker, for the moment. We started looking at what our focus groups should be and there'll be more detail about focus groups and stakeholder groups, there'll be more detail about that over the next couple of months. Our next meeting is here probably, unless the weather's really nice, in which case we'll hold it out by the pavilion, on July the 24th at 6:00 PM. Any questions? Or anybody else? Next item is the library report.
I'm not Claire the librarian, but I'm Kyle Kelly and I'm filling in for her today. She's, it's her birthday, so we gave her the night off. So she just wanted us to mention a couple of things. Alan Shek, how do I say that last name?
I don't have it in front of me.
Steve Shekin is an author and he is coming as part of the library tour. He's been this week touring through the different libraries and he writes, I think, historical novels. And so he'll be here to present his latest novel and then talk with people who are interested in his writing. And then the following week, she has DJ Spencer Lee coming for a dance party. So all ages are more than welcome to come. And these will both be Wednesday at 3:30. And then the following Wednesday after that, which will be really cool, is there's an astronaut from NASA, a current astronaut. I don't have his name here, but he is coming on Friday, August 2nd at 11:00 AM. So that'll be a really neat thing, especially for the kids. So she just wanted us to mention that. But I'll move into my world, which would be Parks and Roads. With Parks, David Parr, our seasonal employee, has been working hard out there. You've probably seen him, he's been watering plants like crazy for four weeks and trying to keep up with what's going on out there. But he just done, got done recently working on the tennis courts. We repaired all the earthquake damage within the courts and he resealed them all and took care of that. So those courts are reopened. He is out there weed whacking, taking care of the disc golf course, cleaning off the roof of the Nissman. He's bouncing all over. So if you see him out there in the municipality truck, that's David. Also out working the field right now is Brooks and Jesse Pline. Brooks Green, Jesse Pline, they are our SCA interns and they've been real productive for us this summer. They spent two weeks with Andy Henland working on the Lower Iditarod Trail. They got that completed with Andy. And then they moved off and they brushed the Beaver Pond. We've been out there hiking or biking, you'll see their work, which I experienced last week and it was wonderful. They also brushed the Lower Iditarod from the Aewu plant up to here, which is really great. And they worked on the cut-through over there down to Lower Davos and then on Deb's Way. And right now, they're currently up on the Iditarod section between the school and Co-Creek Road. And they're in there doing root removal, bringing in gravel, fixing broken boardwalks, taking out brushing and fall. So they're going to probably be in there for the next 10 days. So go see them in the woods. They'll be happy to see you and you'll see the improvements that they're doing. When we went there today, they were making notched steps out of fallen lumber. So it was really, actually really great to see. As always, Emily Maxwell is taking care of our campground. She's our campground host over there and watching that. We did have Forest Fair since our last meeting and we have to say it went really well. We really thank the Forest Fair Committee for running a good program during some of the hottest probably Forest Fair they've ever had. The park was left in excellent shape and they were in and out. And we had a wedding in the park by Thursday and they would've never known that Forest Fair or 15,000 people were there just the weekend before. So thank you to them. Contracts, our invasive weed contract is underway. So you'll see Julie Johnson out there probably with volunteers doing weed, or pulling weeds. And they will at some point in the DOT right-of-way start spraying for invasive weeds out there. It's been very effective the last couple of years. They've gotten rid of a lot of invasive weeds this way. And so they'll be doing that as they go forward. They're going to be primarily focused on the right-of-way area, but they are going to work some hand pole sections around the municipality and also are within the service area and also the school district. So they'll be working on that as the summer goes on. Beautification, as I said, we're just keeping up with watering and trying to keep those planters going. Within the park, in the baseball field, the baseball field, we just always sort of announce on sunny nights is a community softball game. So you'll always find people there on sunny nights, but otherwise the baseball field is open for use. Little League was real productive this year and they just wrapped up their season. Little Bears, we are gonna, Little Bears Playground, that is, we're going to start a project in the sandbox. We have a bunch of rotten wood in there, so we'll be ripping out all that wood and replacing it here over the coming week. So that'll be beginning of our assessment projects. We had the park assessed last year by the people who built it. And so we're working through that list all summer to fix the things that they pointed out to us there. And then in the Lions Club Park, we're working with the Lions Club on their goal to build a pavilion there. So that'll be an ongoing project for the next year, as I said. And for the skate park, we'd like to thank John Gallup for his continued work in the park. He continues working in there tweaking things, especially with our new box jump and taking care, trying to get it dialed in so that things work really well in there, especially with our new ramps in that area. Quickly with trails, we had a ribbon cutting ceremony on July 2nd. We opened up the new bridge down on the Lower Iditarod. So if you haven't been down there to check it out, it is a beautiful bridge. It was built by volunteers and fundraised and has turned out really nice down there along with the trail segment. So I get a chance to go down there. We want to thank Paul Cruz and other GTC or Girdwood Trails Committee members who helped to make this project get completed. And as I said, we finished the trail portion down there up to the Aewu plant. And then we had a great work party on July 2nd on Deb's Way. So we really, really appreciate the strong volunteers and this community for what they do. The hand tram since our last meeting has been reopened. We did inspection, went through it, everything checked out. And we've done our bi-weekly inspections out there since. And we did a greasing of all the shiffs and wheels as we normally do. So everything seems to be working really well out there and getting going and moving forward. Grants, the GBOS nonprofit grants, the 2019 grants have been sent to the MOA for processing. So those grant payments will go out for 2019. And we have received our applications for 2020. And our applicants for 2020 are Challenge Alaska, Four Valleys Community School, Girdwood Art Institute, Girdwood Community Club or the radio station, and Girdwood Valley Transit and Little Bears. So those will be in front of GBOS in September. Let's see here. As always, Margaret does a great job of keeping us updated on social media and websites. The cemetery is on hold as Tommy works with the Eagle River Contingent who's interested in the cemetery project. And so we'll wait until we hear more about that. Road status, we're into quite a few projects right now. We're working on a drainage and culvert improvements on Alta. We just finished up on Stowe Circle and many on the airport side. So the crew is just moving along, a long list of things that we have for the summer. At some point here, we'll be moving down to the mine roads to deal with some roads down there where we have some issues. Since the last meeting, we've reapplied calcium to our main collector roads. It got really dusty, so we did another coating of calcium on the more heavy traffic roads out there. We have a bit of calcium left and a few dollars within the calcium budget, so we purchased that and took care of it. We've done asphalt repair, we've done a drainage improvement project on Hightower, oh, excuse me, Higher Terrace, on Northland, on Timberline, Alta and Stowe Circle. So the crew is, once a week is shifting around trying to get these projects done. So it's been moving along pretty good. We're right now phasing and permitting for the replacement of three culverts. And Aliaska View, they're fish culverts, so they take quite a bit of permitting to get them done right. And they're going to be actually the entrances into Aliaska's back parking lots back there that come off Aliaska View. So we have to put 60-inch culverts in, bury them two feet deep. And it's going to be quite a task, but we hope to have those permits in place and ready to start August 1st. Quickly on our projects, as we mentioned, the Little Bears Glacier City Hall replacement. The idea is to take down the old Little Bears building, build in the old Glacier City Hall and replace it with a full-size Little Bears in that location. This week, I'm meeting with OMB, Operation and Management Budget Department to go over the bonding aspect and gather all that information. And we'll be presenting more about that at your quarterly meeting with Bill Falsy when we have that in two weeks. So you have more information along those lines. The pedestrian flasher project has begun. Have you seen on Friday, they're driving piles out here. And the last couple of days, they've been setting the posts for the, where the push buttons are and they're connecting all the conduit together. And then as soon as the lights and the push buttons and everything show up, they'll install that. So we're right now in Phase 1 and then Phase 2, which will hopefully be in August. They'll be able to install everything and the project will be complete after that. So they have about two more days of work out there and then we'll wait till the equipment shows up. Quickly on expenditures, as of right now, I haven't updated this, but our undesignated account is about 365,000, I believe. I'm probably wrong on that, but I know it's 300,000. So that's funds that aren't designated for the service area. Our expenditures for the road budget last month were 54,000, which was within our average of the last three years for June. And our working operating budget, we've used 46% of our budget for the year. So we're right on pace for being under budget at the year's end. And in our capital roads fund account right now sits at $150,000. For our park expenditures, we've only spent 18% of our park expenditures, but most of our park expenditures are tied up in, say, like the contract with the SCA. We won't pay that till it's completed and things along those lines. So we tend to see a lot of our bills come towards the end of season for parks. So we're only to 18% of the budget used so far there. With police, we have a quarterly bill coming from them. So right now, we've only spent 25% of their operating, or the operating budget for police contract, but we'll be paying out a quarter of the contract here soon for the last few months. And then fire, we've, they've gotten, the fire department has gotten their third quarter drop. So we're at 60% of our budget there. And so everything seems to be on pace budget-wise, so.
Any questions?
Can you walk me through the fish passage culverts that you're doing on Aliaska? I know we had talked about them in different areas of Girdwood as well.
Yeah, so this is a standard, this falls within our maintenance aspect, so it's just a maintenance replacement. So these culverts have crushed, actually if you look at the third culvert. The three culverts are, there's a set of condos right next to the entrance to Aliaska's lower parking lot. There's the lower parking lot entrance and there's the higher parking lot entrance. All three of them actually collapsed inside. So we, when we went to go replace them, we called ADF&amp;G. ADF&amp;G classified it as a fish creek, so we had to do it as a fish culvert replacement. So instead of buying standard 36-inch culverts, we have to buy 60-inch culverts and then bury those two feet deep. So we have 20% burial within it. And then we have to buy CMP. We've been preferring to buy the plastic culverts, but in this case, they want the ripples. So we're putting CMP, so that's corrugated metal pipe going in the ground.
Thank you for the clarification.
I'm going to work with you on that too.
What's the schedule for placing those?
They should take a day each to get them in, but it'll probably take a week in total just because we're going to pump water around the project. So we're going to do one culvert a day, pump water, get the stream reopened. And then we have to do all the fish handling. So if there's any, the creek is designated dolly varden. Very common around here, people say ditch fish, but they're really just dolly varden. So if they get within the nets, we have to go up and carry them around the site. I'll be out there with a little ditching minutes.
I also had a question about the flashes. So I know you said the hope and the goal is to have that done before school starts. Do you think that's likely?
I think it'd be very, I don't think it's likely, I would say. I think it's going to be, it's a possibility, but it just, the problem when you have these lights is that when you order them, then your electrical engineer sends a plan to the people who make the light posts. And then their electrical engineer has to review those plans and then they actually make the lights after it's all been approved. Just because of the legality of the situation, everybody sort of covers themselves. So we're at the mercy of how fast they do that.
Any other questions from the audience? Public? Okay. Thank you, Kyle. Move on to our next section, which is Supervisor Reports, Public Safety. Jerry?
Any other questions from the audience? Public? Okay. Thank you, Kyle. Move on to our next section, which is Supervisor Reports, Public Safety. Jerry?
Kyle and I will work with the Municipal Attorney. We have a meeting this Wednesday to talk about the contract with Police Department in Whittier, and we'll move forward with that. The chief couldn't make it tonight. He has a medical issue, but we're in touch with him. I don't see anybody from the Public Safety Committee, so we had a Public Safety Committee meeting just before Forest Fair, and, you know, we talked about the safety concerns for Forest Fair. As far as we knew, I know, everything went off fairly well, very few incidents. I kept in touch with the fire chief, and she had very few calls. A big call was Sunday night going over to Whittier for the boat, but other than that, I think it went very well. Few cars were towed from hydrants. Few cars double parked on both sides of the street in a couple places, but not, it wasn't extreme. Did I kind of express that?
Yeah.
For the number of people that we had here.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
And I will say that, you know, I checked in with the Fire Department, the Fire Chief multiple times. I checked in with Apolka. I checked in with the police chief, and everything was going smooth. It was, for the number of people we had, it went really smooth. And, you know, Chief Weston told me, you know, that Whittier Police Department had an inebriated woman at one point that couldn't figure a way to get home, and they were very kind to her and didn't put her in the drunk tank and helped her try to find a friend. Very professional, so I think it went well. That's about all I got. Any questions? There is somebody from the public who's gonna have public comment who has a safety issue.
Come to that.
We'll talk to that.
Road to utility?
No comment.
Parks and Recreation?
Kyle did a great job summarizing what's been done in the valley, and I'll just remind everybody that our regularly scheduled Gerwood Trails Committee meeting will recommence on Tuesday, the 2nd of August. For some of the new faces I see in the audience, we will be taking on the plans for a Gerwood Trails Master Plan to help augment what's going on with the Gerwood Area Plan. So if you are a trail user and you'd like to have a say in how our valley will look in the next five, 10, 15 years, we'd love to have you participate in that planning process. Thank you.
Erin, Fire Department?
I'll defer to Michelle for most of the update, but I just wanted to thank Michelle, Fire Department, and the Forest Fair Committee for their preventative measures, keeping our valley safe, free from fires during the Forest Fair, because I know a lot of people have been worried about it. And I was glad to get through it without any fires, so, thank you.
Do you want to come up and give your report, Michelle? Chief?
That's good. Hi there, I'm Michelle Weston. So, so the operational report for July, stand over here. We had 48 calls in, up to, in June. Of those, we've had 247 calls so far, two fires. One of the significant fires was right before Forest Fair. The Forest Fair Committee was out working, and our firefighters were in the kitchen, and all of a sudden they saw a wumpf up from the ball field, and there was a juvenile that had set some cottonwood on fire and then, which sent the whole of the ball field on fire right before Forest Fair. And what was amazing was the Forest Fair, or the Forest Fair Fairies, as I like to call themselves, didn't shout "fire." They shouted "water," and then 30 of them ran out and stomped on all the fire and with Gatorade and that, and then there was a fire response, and that saved basically the bleachers over there in the little area. So Forest Fair did an amazing job on that. And then I'm not sure if you had gone through Forest Fair this year, but they've done a lot of improvements. They did crowd manager training on evacuations, and then they'd also put up, you know, they, we actually GP, had the Muni come down and GPS the locations of all the hydrants and the trees in Forest Fair, so as you walk through, you might not, you know, because you're looking at the booths and everything, but actually there's extinguishers on each tree, and so that was kind of cool. We've also had 24 EMS rescue calls, two hazardous condition calls, and then 20 service calls. So that's for a total of 48 calls in June. You should know that the Woodlot is open this Saturday at the industrial park. I believe it's 10 to 4 with a sort of break at lunch, so if you have brush and you'd like to come down, that's a great way to get with a br, rid of brush without actually burning it. And then also, the Municipal Forester, who still is coming out and doing Firewise Home Assessments, his number is 267-4902, and you can also participate in the sort of Firewise Cost Appartement thing where they'll pay 50% for having trees that are too close to your property removed to Firewise your property. So the Muni will actually still, under a grant from Division of Forestry, pay for 50%. So that's a good deal. And then operational highlights, we have, we currently have 46 staff with one admin position, one person on leave, and then three special operations positions, and those are people who started as firefighters. They're now police officers in Anchorage, but they still want to be firefighters because, of course, fire is better than police, so we keep them on. So we keep them on, but we don't actually have them do the same amount of hours for coverage, but they do still come down and sometimes pull shifts. We did respond to the Whittier Boat Explosion. We sent a rescue truck, two tender, water tenders, and two medic units because Whittier Manor was also evacuated due to smoke, and so there was, initially, we thought we'd be transporting a lot of patients with smoke inhalation, so, so that did occur. That response, that happened at the, on Sunday night at the end of Forest Fair, around 11, I want to say, 10 or 11. And we were able to get Medic 9 to come down. Usually when we have these out-of-area responses, I come down, I stay at the fire hall, and then Medic 9 and Engine 9 will come down and cover us, so, super good for them to do. I know that they wanted, Engine 9 and Medic 9, of course, wanted to go to the fire, because, but they stayed here and covered us instead. And so the crews, just so you know, that when a crew goes out right before midnight to a call like that, you would think, oh, when they're back in service, which is around 3:00 AM, they'll come back and then they'll be done. Well, they're not. Still at 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning, we were still washing gear and that. And because of the nature of what blew up over there, we're at, we've actually washed our gear now. Our turnout's like three times, because there's some weird residue on it, and we're not happy. So, so we're still re-washing the gear to get all those carcinogens and everything out of the gear, out of our turnouts. Fire restrictions continue. I mean, really, I was super worried about Forest Fair, and, you know, it was really the community that I think came together that we didn't have a fire, and everybody sort of was super vigilant, and, and so it's, it's really us. This should be all super happy and thanking you as a community for keeping Gerwood not burnt down. And then during Forest Fair, for the first time ever, we had no medical emergencies in Forest Fair or on the campground. It was amazing. Like, last year, we were running all over Forest Fair. This year, I don't know if it was the heat, but no, everybody was super well behaved and nobody was passing out and that, and so it was pretty fabulous. So we're fully staffed, but not very busy. And then we realized that Whittier Police, bless their hearts, were also carrying fire extinguishers with them and putting out fires ahead of us. So we realized that, again, they're police, but probably they should be firefighters. And then we did have some problems with road access on Timberline this time and New Gerwood Townsite again from parking. Again, if we could somehow figure out to make, if we could somehow channel people to only park on one side of the road versus both sides, it would be good. And then Whittier Police was fabulous to work with in terms of removing cars from the blocked hydrants, which was happening multiple times. So, so super fabulous response from Whittier. And again, it was mentioned, but I did see, witnessed Whittier being super fabulous with an inebriated lady that just really needed to have a friend to get her home versus having her go into town and go into the sleep-off center, which would have been not a good situation for her, in my opinion. So when you go to Forest Fair, always take a friend. So then additionally, I just want to thank the Merc Grocery Store, because they traditionally during Forest Fair sell lots of wood, even though it's usually a no campfire burn is in place. They decided, after they've sold a bunch of wood, not to sell any more wood voluntarily. I'm not sure if it was, I think it was a staff thing. I'm not sure if it was a corporate policy, but that was huge for us, because people weren't, people were trying to buy wood, and they were like, no, there's no fires. And then Rodney at the Merc was actually telling, giving a fire safety message with everything he sold, and so, which was super fabulous. So at a future Board of Supervisors, I'd like to give him, the Merc and him a little award, along with the Forest Fair Committee, just for being good, good citizens of fire safety in our community. And then myself and Tim from Glacier Rangers District, the ranger there, were deployed to the Swan Lake Fire as part of the Alaska Incident Management Team. And then I think Tim stayed there, and then I, as I was demobilizing from there, was sent to the Anchorage Fire to go check in and be there for that evening as well. So, which ironically, we just in 2010 worked on a fire, the same fire in the same location, you know, and then there was one recently after that. So that was interesting. And then we are coming out of fire season slowly but surely, which is a good thing. So that's operation news. Department news, we had ISO interview today. Basically, this is when ISO comes in and they reevaluate your insurance premiums in terms of fire safety, and so we think that there's, we expect there will be no change. If there had been a change, everybody's insurance premiums would have gone up, and it's all based on, they come in and they look at all your records, all your equipment, all your staffing, and they, they actually sit there and review every piece of paper and, and make a determination based on factors. So looks like we're gonna be good, at least when she left at 4 o'clock, looked like we were good. And then we have a municipal audit of the Gerwood Fire Department finances and payroll going on right now, and so that report will come to the Assembly in the future. I've been working on evacuation plans, because that's what I normally do with the Incident Management Team, so I'm working on those for our community. The Kena Borough Contract for Out-of-Area Responses with us is now in Kena Borough Legal, handled by the municipality. Super happy about that. And then our contract negotiations with AFD will start in September. And then finally, we were able to successfully raise $5,000 for two new e-bikes to improve trail response in the community, so happy about that, too. Any questions?
You look good on TV with the bikes.
The bikes, the bikes are fast.
It was on, what was it? Bartholomew was on there?
Yes, she was on, yeah.
I didn't hear any fireworks the whole, I didn't hear.
There were fireworks. Oh, you heard one? Yeah, there were fireworks. There's a group of people who like to camp on the school district property behind, kind of behind the post office there, and they were shooting off fireworks again, and we were driving around, and Whittier was, police were gonna go in and try and roust them all out and make them leave, so, which, that was the problem area last year, too, so where the assault had happened. So, you know, so I did call the school district in the middle of the night, facilities person, just to say, hey, your problem, your property, your problem. So maybe next year, they can do something about it, so.
In that case, I revise my statement. I slept very well during the forest. Any other questions? Okay. Next, it's land use. That's me. Brian covered all the issues on land use committee. The review for Title 21, Chapter 9, we had a meeting last Monday before land use, just to clear up a couple of issues in our onsite commercial parking review. We have a proposal going into the Muni for that, and we had a meeting with the Planning and Traffic Department a couple of weeks beforehand, and we were just cleaning up one or two issues that they suggested. So that's now in progress. Housing Working Group, we didn't have a meeting this month. We will have a meeting next month. We have an ADU, so an accessory dwelling unit, change in ordinance, which is also, should be at planning, I think, should be at planning today or tomorrow, and that's gonna go through the municipal process. We'll follow that. Any questions? Okay. Next thing is public comment. Do you want to have public comment? Please come up here, state your name.
Are you ready?
We're ready. Don't touch the microphone.
Okay. My name is Emily Schwing. I reside at 352 Crow Creek Road. My husband built our house 15 years ago. For the last three years, I've lived at our address part-time, and in March of this year, I located to Gerwood permanently. Our family is made up of myself, my husband, and our 12-year-old, who's my stepson, and until last night, we had three dogs. Sorry. Ghost, Daisy, and Tully. Tully is a new addition to our family, and I got him from a close friend who owns a kennel of race and working dogs in Nana back in May. He was nine months old. We joked that one of the black spots over his eyes looked like a pirate's eye patch, so we called him our Pirate Patch Puppy. Last night at 8:00 PM, after what I can honestly say was probably one of the greatest days of Tully's life, thanks to Gerwood, he had a run on the Beaver Pond Trail, a jaunt up the new Lower Iditarod Trail yesterday afternoon, and a dip in California Creek below our house, followed by a giant bowl of kibble and a huge piece of old salmon. I let him out of our house with our other dogs, and he was struck by a vehicle just outside our house. I did not witness the accident, and I admit, I was in too much personal shock to hear what the driver had to say. I can't be sure my dog was not at fault. Perhaps the truck was driving slowly and maybe Tully wandered into the street. What I do know is that when we spoke with a veterinarian in Anchorage last night, she told us our dog's injuries were catastrophic, and at 11:00 PM, I found myself lying on the floor of a vet clinic with my puppy pressed against my chest as the veterinarian administered drugs to euthanize him. I realize that you, the Board of Supervisors, cannot bring my dog back, but all summer long, my husband and I have commented on the traffic that whizzes past our home, cars and trucks travel at high speeds and hung both the shoulder and center lines. Some vehicles peel out of the parking lot across the street as if a drag race has started. And this happens even after 10:00 PM. Weekends are the worst for us. I work from home all day long on weekdays, and my desk looks out of our second-floor window. I watch as bikers and pedestrians, children and dog walkers pass by our house regularly. We use the road to access the Beaver Pond, Iditarod, and Winter Creek Trails on foot or bike, and always with our dogs. Between our house and the bridge over California Creek that sits just south of Raven Glacier Lodge, there are multiple residences along both sides of the road. I've spoken with the owners and operators of both the Double Muskie and Carriage House, two businesses within a stone's throw of our front yard, and honest, wonderful neighbors. Both support my testimony here tonight to implore you, Gerwood's Board of Supervisors, to please help us find a way to decrease the speed limit or slow traffic in front of our homes and businesses on Crow Creek Road, so that the children, friends, neighbors, and visitors to Gerwood do not have to experience what we did last night or worse. That's all. Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, I, I drove up there just to see, and Emily called me earlier today. You know, we're asking what we can do with the speed limit there. There's a speed limit sign at 30 miles an hour right as you come off of the highway, but there is just one sign and that's it, as you go up the road. And, you know, the only thing as the board that we can do is, as I promised to do, is we can get Whittier to, police to patrol the area. And specifically, we're gonna ask that they patrol the area between like 6:00 and 8:00, you know, or 6:00 and 10:00 on weekends. That's a DOT road, so we don't get a lot of response when we go to the DOT. You know, we've been working on the swoop problem, and the DOT doesn't listen very much. Emily has asked, like, could we put in speed bumps? Can we put in, you know, more signage? All those things are possible. We have to go to the DOT. We don't have responsibility because it's not a service area road. And everybody knows how much response we've gotten in the past from the DOT. The one thing we will do is, you know, get the police to patrol more. She's up for other solutions. One solution I thought of was just to have, go to the Double Muskie and ask them to put a sign on their property to respect the neighborhood and to slow down when you go out of their property. And I would probably do something like that. I don't, anybody else have any other ideas? I don't, anybody else have any other ideas?
I support the Citizens Initiative. It certainly helped us with the pedestrian crossings, both at Timberline and here at Eggloft. Putting up the little flags, provided with some good visuals that children could use when going across the road to the trailheads to access the playground. I know it's not a permanent solution, although we actually still have them, what, two summers later? We have the flag fairies in our community that work together, and it's been a positive response. It's been supported by the neighbors and the children in the area.
So, Rob, when you said there's a parking lot opposite, that's the Double Muskie Park?
Yeah. Yeah, tonight I talked with Bob, our superintendent of the Double Muskie today, and he said that the speed limit used to be 20 miles an hour, and it's important to go up. And that was corroborated by J. J. Truham's Carriage House. I've also spoken with my husband. From what I know, in my elder life, I'm a public radio reporter, and I covered a issue where a child was killed outside of University Park Elementary School in Carribean in 2014. And we put speed bumps in, and I know that they were not very expensive, so money isn't an issue. I'm going to be happy when my neighbors and neighbors ask me to put it in. But cars are just too fast, and people, and dogs, and kids, and bikes are no match.
Yeah, the thing about the public is there's no point, but you're just racing to the dirt. And then people come off the dirt, of course, they speed up as soon as the pavement. And you guys know the rules.
But I do agree that there has been a lot of after-hours speeding in our community. I live over on the corner of High Tower and the Ski View Building, and there's been several evenings where I hear the drag racing that goes up to the Aliaska, and I see heads nodding in the audience for those on radio land. But they'll go up to Aliaska's Day Lodge and then make the turn, and then zoom on down right past. We've all heard them. It's usually around 2:00, 2:30 in the morning that we've heard them. So, any patrol between 6:00 and 10:00 PM, I wouldn't mind extending that into more evening patrols along the main collector that brings these people into our community.
Kyle, I'll talk to the chief.
And the speed limit in all the neighborhoods are too, it's too high because we use, we don't have sidewalks, and people that come in from other areas that don't live in this community don't realize that other communities may have sidewalks, they're used to going 30, 35, 40. But we all use our roads as sidewalks, and I don't think people come out of town who don't realize that. And everyone's usually going to patrol into Crow Creek there, just as soon as they get down that hill, they just keep going.
Yeah, so this is really something we need to, we need to, we need to discuss with Whittier, for it's really enforcement problem. We're just so limited in what we can actually do on that road because we don't, it's not our road, it's the state's road.
Yeah, but the thing is, guys, it's DOT, and nowhere you can get through that. The bureaucratic craziness with DOT is, I've done construction projects, is you can't get through it if it's really something special, you're going to have to go through it, but just wait. Who's going to have to tell them what this community wants? And they probably would react to that.
Yeah, I would hope so. That hasn't been the case with the sweeps at all. We've put a lot of pressure, we've done it, we've taken different political approaches, and it's not been successful with traffic.
They work out an upside-down building, and they kind of work out where the inside building, but there is nowhere to get to.
One idea that I had is to get our representatives to come down here, and I thought, well, I'd do it in May, after the session was over. I don't know when that will ever happen, but I'm going to ask both of our legislators to come down here and, you know, talk about, walk the sweeps, and we can talk about the Crow Creek Road also. But the other thing we can do is, you know, we can, you know, write something to the DOT asking to reduce the speed limit.
Yeah, I don't know why. I mean, I think that's the only, well, it's obviously 30 along Aliaska Highway and 30 along Crow Creek Road, but it will be, on the other side, where it's 20 or 25, something from 15.
You have to slow down anywhere within miles.
Exactly, yes.
Isn't that a residential area?
Residential's 25.
Parts of our residential, parts of our commercial.
Yeah, but that Crow Creek Road is a collector. It's different, it's got a different designation within the transportation plan. So, again, I would continue to point out that you need to attend Girdwood Area Plan meetings, Girdwood Trail Committee meetings, all that planning that lays out what your trails look like, what your collector roads are designated as, what the speed limits are going to pertain to them, all come back to planning meetings. So, please participate and let your voice be heard when you see it on our agendas.
One thing we did ask, Whittier Police asked us to do it because it helps with their enforcement is in the local maintenance shop, which they really don't have a lot of power to do much of anything. They did get approval, they put up those orange flags on the back of the speed limit signs you'll see up and down Aliaska Highway. So, I'll call and make a request to Paul, who's the foreman here, to see if he can do that on Crow Creek. And I'll ask him at that time if he can do anything about the speed limit. That usually always goes up to a traffic engineer who makes those decisions, so they can't usually do much from the maintenance aspect, but they can get those flags up probably.
And, I mean, as an example, I asked to lower the speed limit coming into the valley, and DOT's response was, they checked what speeds were out there, and since most people went 47, they weren't going to lower it below 45, which made absolutely no sense to me. That was their response. Most people go faster than the speed limit, so we're not going to reduce it.
So, you guys are working on a national standard?
Yeah.
National standard.
You've heard that line a lot. Okay, any other discussions?
I guess I would say, I'd be in favor of writing a letter to them about it. I think we would have a good argument that our, most of our other side roads, neighborhood roads are 20 miles per hour and 30, that's a big difference. At least for that first, I don't know, like half mile or quarter mile of houses, you know?
Yeah, until the end of the pavement.
Yeah. Does anyone want to volunteer for that matter?
I, I can do it. And maybe I'll work with you, and we could get the neighbors to kind of sign up and do it, too.
Thank you. Thank you again for your public comment. We're now moving on to old business. So, review progress, negotiations with the Whittier Police Department contract for the next five years.
Oh, that's me. That's me. Like I said, we're meeting with Todd Sherwood on Wednesday to go over the Anchorage portion of the legality of the contract, and then we're going to meet with the Whittier people and schedule a meeting with them. We hope to have it, you know, ready to go by September, October timeframe. Right, Kyle?
Correct.
Did I express that correctly?
Yeah, we'll meet with administration before we meet with the Whittier representatives.
Yeah, and the one issue, of course, is, what you stated earlier is parking.
Parking, yes.
And I will work on that.
Currently, that's not in our current contract.
That's correct.
And is it in the future contract, or is it still after discussion?
It's in there, but it's at a price. It's an additional cost.
Oh, yeah, it's an additional cost.
We need to figure that out. I agree with the additional cost.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Discuss a set agenda topics for the MOA GBOS quarterly meeting scheduled for July the 29th at 4:00 PM, Anchorage City Hall. So, we have three items so far, and I've heard a couple of discussions about new items.
We added a fourth item at the meeting just before this, discussing the Fire Department EMS budget.
Okay.
As well as the follow-up on the MOA, excuse me, between Kenea, Girdwood, and the Muni's lawyers, which is in review.
Yep, it's by department issue. I'm going to suggest we add, depending how discussions go later, we might add a topic about the short-term rentals. We'll see how that discussion goes, I'm preempting it.
We have an hour with them, if you need.
Any comments from the audience, general public? Okay. We'll move straight to the next item. Consider and vote on GTC request for GBOS resolution of support for the KMTA grant for signage on Beaver Pond, California Creek, and Abe's Trail with assistance by the Eagle Scout Camper, Micah Weddington. Kate, can you speak to this?
Hi, I'm Kate Sandberg, and I'm with the Trails Committee. We're here, we introduced it, Carolyn Brodean introduced it with Micah last month, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have. We are anticipating filing of a grant, application with KMTA for signage. It is going to be a three, two or three panel sign at the Beaver Pond entrance on Crow Creek Road. It'll be quite fancy, it'll have some history, it'll have some safety concerns, it will have a map, and then we will also have posts at California Creek Trailhead off of Beaver Pond, Abe's Trail, and then at the other end, we just today got permission from Chugatch State Park to have, to replace the post there and have a good post with good directional signage. So, we have all our ducks in a row. We would appreciate the community's support, however, and that would come through this resolution.
Would you like to read the resolution?
Yeah, I can find it in my pocket. Resolution 2019-10 of the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, resolution of support for the Kenea Mountain Turnigan Area Heritage, Kenea Mountain Turnigan Arm Heritage Area, Girdwood Trails Committee application. Whereas the community of Girdwood has many trails located throughout the valley and a significant number of trail users of all abilities, and whereas over recent years the number of trail users and types of trail use have grown, and whereas many of the community's trails are not signed well and are confusing to those who do not know the area, and whereas the safety of all users is paramount, and the signage in this area will provide safety information and locators, and whereas Micah Weddington will lead a trail signage installation project along with the Girdwood Trails Committee, GTC, on the Beaver Pond, Abe's, and California Creek Trails for his Eagle Scout project, and whereas GTC can apply for a grant from the Kenea Mountains Turnigan Arm National Heritage Area, KMTA, to produce the trail signs that will be posted at trailheads and various waypoints on the trails. And whereas the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, GBOS, appreciates the commitment and longstanding relationship with KMTA in pursuit of our shared goals in community and youth involvement to increase public awareness and appreciation for the natural, historical, and cultural resources in the heritage area. Therefore, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors supports the Girdwood Trails Committee's grant application to KMTA to produce trail signs. Passed and approved by a vote of blank to blank on the 15th of day of July 2019.
I'll second.
I'll second.
May I add something? I was thinking about this, and the trapping law or regulation has changed, and we do want designated trails to be very, quite designated, so that when we, you know, when we have winter trapping, we can say, "No trapping X amount of feet." And with these posts, it'll be very clear that this is, that these are all designated trails. So, if you want to add that, that's fine. If you don't, it's fine, too. But it's also another additional benefit of signage.
I do not see the need to add it because we were able to hit upon all the criteria to meet the KMTA grant application.
That's right.
Although, I'd rather.
Yeah, you stole the point I was going to make. I can say the same thing. Yes, the trap, the, John could probably remind me how it went. A couple of months ago, I think the municipality passed a law to.
I think last month.
It was the last month?
We just got a, this is a constant trail. That would be wonderful.
Right.
This is just for the even takers. Okay. I know nearly. Okay, and then maybe you can mail it to.
Chris, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'll add to also John's comment. We are working with the municipal attorney and with the consentless attorney on the actual designation of those named trails. There's a whole handful that are real easy, and then there's a whole handful that are not to designate. So, we're working through that carefully so that we don't try to designate something that's under private property.
Okay, do you have the information you need from Girdwood Valley?
I believe so, but if we need more, and this will be a public process.
Right.
By that place.
Okay. Well, anything we can do to help?
Sure.
Trails Committee, we'd be happy to help you.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? I'd just like to say that I think this is an excellent, excellent example of the sort of community working together. We have trails, we have the scout group as well, and we have Micah himself who volunteered to do this. Any other comments? No other comments? I think we should move to a vote. All those in favor? Anyone, nobody against?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Daisy.
Thank you. Okay, next item. Discuss and approve road and drainage improvements to High Tower Road, based on our estimate of 42,522. Kyle?
Correct. So, I'll stay from this location at that time. We want to remove the bump out on the first entrance in the town square crossing the Merk. It is a, honestly, a bad design. It causes the water to build there, the grader can't get behind it to clear snow, and so then the water will build up, it'll settle there, and then as traffic comes in and people hit it, eventually that asphalt failed. So, the asphalt failed right in the middle of winter for us last year, we had to do repair. So, the goal would be to remove the bump out there and make it flush. If you look in your plans here, I'll just show real quick. Well, maybe, I won't, but it would be shrinking that area now. And currently, you'll see on the second page is what the bump out looks like. We will take that bump out away, we'll line it up with the sidewalk coming in, and make that a straight shot. So, the water's coming off Aliaska Highway, we'll make it to that location. Originally, we tried to put a catch basin further up the sidewalk to catch the water earlier, but that became really cumbersome. And once again, with DOT, it became even more cumbersome because they wanted a full review, and they wanted, they wouldn't accept anything smaller than an 18-inch pipe, which was overkill for this. And so, in the end, we abandoned that route and decided to keep the water coming down to the existing location. But without the bump out there, I don't think we'll have the problem like we've had now. And also, they're going to fix the grade there. When that project was finished, right away, it was a worrisome spot for me because I could tell that the grade coming to that catch basin was a little bit lower, and it was just at the minimum. So, they're going to build that portion up a little bit, so the degree of pitch towards that catch basin will be much greater, and the water will get there faster. So, we'd be looking to replace that. So, basically, it'd be a tear and rebuild in that location with curved asphalt and a bit of soil and seed in that location, and moving signs. And so, 36,000 would be for the, we would use a term contractor that we have, the municipality, to do the build, and then, right now, they have an estimate of 12,000 in there for construction management. Right away, that rang bells for me, and I talked with TBC, the potato company, about that, and they said, "That's on the high end." And I said, "Yes, that's on the very high end." I expected not to really be more than six for project inspection, and they would handle the payments and all those types of things, and they agreed. So, I'll be watching that carefully. So, most likely, we will not be up near the $48,000 range in that aspect.
How much time and cost was it to fix the issues you had last winter?
Well, I mean, it was basically time and materials with the contractor. We bought the bag of coal patch. It's the coal patch patch right now, so it's not actually real asphalt there. And we're just, we're buying time. I know as soon as winter returns and we get hot water again, that hot hole will blow right out, it'll continually figure. We'll turn back the lake, Merk, the Merk Lake again, which I really missed.
Any other comments from the board?
No, at the very beginning of the meeting, we were asked whether or not we had any conflicts to address, although we talked about it when it was, oh, new business the last time, and still will bring it up, just since we have a different audience. But that's my parking spot where I live, and so, in the packet, I live at the little signature area that says the word Girdwood at 2.5 SY, that's. "Brew" at 2.5 SY, that's my parking spot, so I directly benefit at this project, so one is better to put that out there. Comment you would like me to obtain in the vote that I would have, I think you sent.
Just a little late for that. You should have been leaving the room. Again, I do not think that's a significant conflict. There is a private interest, but it definitely does raise to be significant.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, sure, please, any other?
Did the Putei company manage the project, the general project?
No, it was designed and built by RM. Putei had, they represented the client in it, but it was a design approved through RM and engineering department, so.
So, we've had this problem, this problem has been, it's been every winter really, hasn't it? Sorry? This has been a problem every winter, which is particularly bad last year, or where there's specific issues?
Since 2012.
Right, or where there's specific issues last year?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, those bump outs, they're great for pedestrian awareness, it brings the pedestrian out so that cars can see it, but from a maintenance operation, they're a pain in the butt, you know, like, we have a specific skid steer that has to operate out there to push snow out because if it's a straight curve, like out here, this curve out here is the best because the grader can actually go up on the sidewalk, grab the snow, and then come back down and grab everything, we can do everything with the grader. This here, trying to get around these bump outs, they just become a hazard.
Yeah, I know some of the curve there acts almost like a ramp because so much of it is being scraped up, I think, but...
Yeah, you know, and that bump out in particular, the snow will build up and grader won't know where it is, and we have a big snowfall, and they'll hit it and cause all kinds of issues.
That's right. So, this is old business, so if you're looking for an action, but...
I'd make a motion to approve $48,000, no more than $48,822. This is out of the Capital Roads account.
Correct.
Is that correct? Out of the Capital Roads account for the road and dated, road and drainage improvement to Hightower Road.
Anybody else wish to say?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion, the board, from the public? Okay, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All those against? You have to vote one way or the other.
I can abstain.
Not really, not in our rules.
Nope.
Now, if you haven't been recused, then you have to make a vote.
Done it, okay, I'm in favor.
So, in favor, so that's five to zero.
Reception, man, reception.
Okay, on to new business. Agenda item LUC 1907-04, introduction of proposal to rename the Girdwood baseball field in honor of Slayden Moll. Group will seek GBOS resolution of support. Betty Sharin to present.
Hi, my name's Betty Sharin, and I am here representing a group of, group of people, and we are proposing to name the baseball field after Slayden Moll, and for those of you who have the letter, you can see that Slayden Moll was pretty, he was basically born and raised here, grew up here, and was tragically killed this, this past spring. But the reason why we want to name the baseball field after, after him is because baseball was his passion. He played Little League in Girdwood all the years that he could, he played through high school and then was recruited to play in college, and was their starting catcher when he was, when he was killed. And then, on top of that, he was just a, a great guy, good role model, you know, devoted to his friends and family, and was just a really good role model for a lot of the younger kids. So, really, to commemorate this outstanding young man, we'd like to name the field after him and call it the Slayden J. Moll Memorial Field. Our plan is, we'd like to have a, build a big sign, a wooden sign, along with that baseball field. It'll be in line with all the other signs that we have around here and all the other, all the other parks, and call it the Slayden J. Moll Memorial Field. Our plan is to raise funds. Our group, along with the Girdwood Little League and Friends and Family of Slaydens, you know, the fundraising would be, would be done, you know, by, by us, and so, that would be funds for the design, construction, and installation of this, of this sign. And then, maintenance, future maintenance will, you know, be done by volunteers as well, whether it's the Girdwood Little League or, you know, other Friends and Family, but just to keep this, keep this name alive. Any questions? And I think Kyle said that this is a process that we have to go through, right?
Yeah, it's, that's outlined in code, since it's a municipal owned facility, it's clearly outlined in code how to go through it and get assembly approval, so we wanted to start at the community level, make sure we have the community support and work with the mayor's office to, to work on naming the field, so. So, there's, it's clearly outlined what to do, so this is the first step.
What, are there any issues about timing? How long does that process take, you know?
It would probably be something that we would probably dedicate next year in the spring, so we'd be all prepared to do it in the spring, would probably, the start of baseball season would be great.
I have just a question, I'm just fully in support of this, of this idea. In my experience in the past, when something has been designated after someone has passed away, in the next generation, people don't know who that person is, and so, I would suggest if you could have a plaque or something that explains who he was, that would help people then remember or understand later.
Yeah, thanks, Kate, that's a really good idea, and actually, I think the group of people, they, they have all kinds of ideas, and so, but yeah, that would be, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, this is just for Kyle. Probably three or four years ago, the assembly modified the naming code and inserted a provision that asks that a native name be considered first when looking at naming parts, facilities, et cetera. It doesn't have to be a native name, but because of the code provision, you consider it. Obviously, this is a very big circumstance, and we've done similar namings for other past individuals, but just so that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, I just put that out there, that consideration of the native name needs to be something that the group does.
And my understanding is there's a, a group is appointed to sort of go through this?
Yeah, I've got, the purpose of the grade way starts to establish, sure there's interest and support, and then there would be, work with the mayor's office, the PK, Andy Calm, and that group does the actual preparation and discussion and puts forward the naming regulations.
Any other comments from the public? I'd just like to say, I mean, it, it definitely seems like an extremely fitting, fitting tribute, and we will discuss this again next, next month and vote on it then. We'll move on to the next item, actually, our last item of the evening, which is Agenda Item LUC 1907-05, discussion of short-term rental impacts on the community, specifically Echo Ridge, but elsewhere as well. I know there are, I recognize several people in the audience who spoke to this at last week's LUC meeting. Would anyone like to, to start the discussion? Do you, actually, do you want to come up to, and just state your name?
My name?
Yeah, to the, to the people listening on radio.
Hi, my name's Kate. I know some of you, I've been here a long time, I don't attend these, I don't watch it, but I haven't attended one actually since I was the trail foreman back in the late 90s, I think, so it's been a long time. But, starting on the Echo thing, that's kind of a focused, focused deal that's going on in Echo. I think really to back up would probably be the best thing to do. What, what happened on the, on the high streets in Girdwood, they're the hardest to develop, of course, so they were the last to sell. And so, with the advent of things like Airbnb, through the information age, you know, people obviously, in the history of Girdwood before, you know, it was, the second homes were owned by people in town who could afford them, whatnot, they came down, they were their second home. So, they're investment properties, so Airbnb, so, not Airbnb, sorry, it'll take, I don't really talk in public, it'll take me a second. So, there was quite a few properties that were bought up there to turn into investment, investment properties, and, and of course, that's going to happen, you know, and so, as the properties turn around in Girdwood in the future, you guys know what will happen, you know, so you're going to have the, you know, the people who want to live here are going to be, have a hard time outbidding or outpricing the folks who are looking for a, for an investment property. And in my mind, yeah, I'll get to Echo, but in my mind, the main thing is, you know, I'm, I'm well aware of all the HLB land in Girdwood, I know the zone as well as anyone better than most, and so, with the area plan, if it were to continue forward into the development stage and open up new areas for residential use, it would be a shame for that to occur with us on kind of hard regulation on what needs to be done as far as onsite management type stuff, proper parking areas and that sort of thing. Because I can just see what's going to happen, I'm sure you guys have talked about it a million times, I'm sure you have, and you guys know as well as I do what's going to happen. So, to focus on Echo, I mean, obviously, those lots were hard to build on, so, you know, people came in and turned them into Airbnbs, there were some of the last ones available.
Could you speak a little louder around the part I'm hearing?
So, right across from us, we had an interesting thing happen. The, the previous owner of what I believe is 317, 315, and 325, are those the right numbers? Had owned both lots. He's a really nice guy, but he got tired of parking on the street, so he cut in a driveway down there to get to the upper lot from the lower lot. So, then, when he sold them, he sold each lot separately, you know, because he'd get more form. And the person who bought his house went before the muni and got it zoned as a shared driveway. Unfortunately, the muni also allowed the second lot to be developed in, into a two-unit rental, meaning that the, the owner had to live in, on the residence for six months out of the year to be able to rent the second. So, there's two complete units on site. Both units together are advertised as being able to accommodate almost 20 people, and there's a designated parking for four cars. And you know Echo, Echo is just a pain in the butt anyway. So, the main thing, the main takeaway with the Echo thing is, I just hate to see that happen to somebody else, because I'll tell you what, if it's across from you, you're going to find out how much of a headache it is. I wouldn't have thought so initially, I wouldn't have thought that it would be like a really big deal, I'd be like, "All right, whatever." But without a property manager on site, I mean, unfortunately, people run rampant, and that's the deal. I mean, without somebody there actually hardlining it and being like, "All right, well, we need, we need either, you know, a B&amp;B type regulation where, you know, there has to be adequate parking and there has to be a manager on site to actually line people out." And that, and at that point, you get to the situation, well, is the residence even large enough for an onsite manager and a rental? And that's where the argument's going to come. I mean, obviously, at some point in time, as you guys want to take this to the muni, the property owners are going to show up here, and it's going to start going back and forth big time at that point in time. I mean, right now, we're kind of batting the ball around amongst ourselves, but you know, that's not going to stay that way, so I don't have answers. I just know that I, we have the Tempest across from us, unfortunately, and it's, it's not that they're not nice people, the people who own the property, it's that there's really no, there's no baseline, of course, so when there's no baseline and you have people looking for investment properties, I mean, they're going to ask later and do what they want, and that's just the way it is. I don't really have much more. I don't really have answers, sorry. I hate to come up here and whine, that's really not the kind of person I am, that's why you don't see me, I just work, but it is what it is.
So, can I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So, I know there are multiple properties up there, more than just those two.
Yeah.
So...
I had an interaction with another fella, just who's buying the property above there. There was a lot above there where there was Piling's Drove, and I think the person who was going to develop it decided, for some reason, they moved out of it. So, that person bought the property, it's going to be a second residence, he lives in Rabbit Creek, and it's, I think, he said he was building a single-family occupancy, so he said he wasn't planning on building a double unit like the other unit, but I don't know what the regulations or the zoning are on that. I was really surprised that the muni allowed the second house on that shared driveway to be two separate units.
So, you have like three, three...
There's, there's, there's three short-term rentals on one driveway.
Right.
That has, that is zoned for four cars, that is advertised to accommodate 20 people. Yeah, it's a bit silly. I, I think it squeaked by the muni. I think if they'd actually seen it and spent more time in there, they would have been like, "Whoa." But it was just one of those things that kind of squeaked by them, so.
Any other, any other questions from here or from the audience, or other comments from the audience?
We have more, um, do you want to...
There were other people on there. Just, I should kick out.
Go for it.
Okay.
I live on St. Moritz.
Right.
I've lived in the valley for over 44 years, my name is Kathy Substead, I've lived the last 21 years on St. Moritz, and what's happening on St. Moritz is we have three very active VRBOs, and for the most part, I don't care how you make your payment on your house, I don't care if you rent it, but there has to be, you have to have enough parking, so if you rent your house at a certain amount of money and you've got, I don't know, seven cars show up, and we have very narrow streets, that doesn't work. In the last, we had problems with cars being parked, snowplow couldn't get up because we live at the top of the road, and there was no sanding, and so, you had a car out on the road and it stopped everything. And so, we have three very active VRBOs on St. Moritz, and we don't have the noise pollution that I think they're having on Echo Ridge, but the one at the very end of Echo Ridge, the last two nights, they've been partying down till 2:00 in the morning while I'm retired. I don't care, except for the fact that if I had to go to work the next day, I would care, because the noise pollution, there's a couple of problems going on here. One is most, basically, parking. If you have seven cars show up, we have very narrow roads, you have to have, you can't do that. You, you have to, if, they need to carpool or something happens, so you have to have enough parking for each car, and on St. Moritz, we don't have the noise pollution that I think that's probably happening on Echo Ridge, but this is a valley-wide thing, and it needs to be dealt with, and we have, we come from, we have another place in Hawaii, and they've already dealt with all this. They, you know, it's like, if there's a problem after a certain point of time, they can deal with it. Police, you can call the police. We can't call the police, right? Puttyer police can't write tickets, they can't issue, they can't do anything. So, there's a problem here that needs to be dealt with, and it's starting to get, I think it's starting to just grow, and it's going to keep growing, and as a community, we can deal with it. Like I said, I don't have a problem if it takes whatever you to do to keep your house, if you have to rent, that's okay, but you just have to provide enough parking, and you have to have respectful people come in so that they know that their neighbors may need, need to go to work the next day, and they keep it quiet, okay? I'm good.
What makes St. Moritz and Echo super unique is it's already narrowed, and then our driveways seem to come in at an angle because of the steepness of the two roads.
Yes.
So, it makes chokes every so often, and it brings the road down to about a lane and a half, so when you get someone parking on one side of the road, you have maybe a lane to get by, but when you start having people park on both sides of the road, which is what happens on Echo, you can't even, today, there's box trucks on one side and star on the other, and we could barely get our little Tacoma down through it, and that's just workers during the day, but it's so choked in certain spots from driveways coming in.
And we've had problems in the winter time where it's like, it's like somebody parks, and then snowy road, there's no snowy road, there's no sanding, so it's like, "Okay, we're right down here."
That's exactly what we're having.
So, hi, my name is Dale Goodwin, and I am a, an Echo Ridge resident, and where we live, across the street from us and up the hill, are five short-term rental units that if I've done my math correctly, have 51 beds, and this is the last, what I would consider... And this is the last, what I would consider quarter of Echo Ridge Road. And all of these units, so one, the place right across the street, or actually, next to Erin, across the street sleeps 14 people. Then you have the three units, the two duplexes in the house together that sleep 19, and then at the top of the hill that sleeps 18. And over, this was kind of the infamous for Solstice Weekend, there were two big wedding parties in both of the homes, and one wedding party took up four of the units, and they were the ones that got kicked out of Chair Five. And they were the ones where a late-night guy ran over the stop sign at St. Moritz in Alpine Meadows, and were speeding up and down the streets of Echo Ridge. So parking is a big issue, but the other issue is people speeding on the street. Echo Ridge is a very steep street. As Kyle had mentioned at Land Use, that the, almost half the sand budget goes for our street, because it's, and Hank has pulled out every, one year, he pulled out every renter out of the ditch. And I know Gabe has pulled out a lot of people too, but they drive too fast, it's scary.
Can I interject a little quick, Dale?
Of course.
Yeah, they drive, they do drive too fast, and I'm out there, I think I'm out there almost every day over the weekend, you know, trying to get people to slow down. But what we realized is that the speed limit is 20 miles per hour. So if you try to go 20 miles per hour up Echo Ridge, the speed limit, the maximum speed limit is too fast.
Or down.
Yeah, or down.
You hit your brakes.
Absolutely. So, I mean, I don't even know if it's legal for me to go out there and tell people to slow down, because the speed limit is 20 miles per hour, which is way too fast for that road. So it kind of brings it all the way back around to what Emily was saying about the speed limit in general.
It's almost like, it's almost not their fault, they're not used to driving.
Yeah.
They don't pay up there.
Yeah.
Try to stop.
Yeah.
You guys?
I just have, just a few more.
We're all obviously homeowners on St. Moritz and Echo, but the reality is, this is a resort community. We went, I remember going for all the years with the title change here, all the suddenly rules, and all the years we fought on all these different issues that were going on. At that time, there was no BBRO, there was no Airbnb. I don't think anybody saw that stuff in the future. But it's not going to be just our streets that's the problem, it's going to be, it's going to be a Gerdwood problem. It might already be more of a Gerdwood problem than we, than we don't right now. I'm sure the homeowners are prepared to go. The fires from the BBROs that want you to sign up, they want to buy your property, whatever, everybody looking to make money. And this is a place to actively make money, do that kind of stuff. So there's, it's going to have to be some sort of, whether it's through the community or through the, I don't even know how you would police something like this, but there's got to be some, something set up in our community that controls them.
So.
Like Dale said, you can't have 20 beds in a house, I mean, that's.
Well, and four parking places designated for 20 people.
Four parking places.
And we have, across the street from us, we've counted multiple times within the lap, because it's really popular both winter and summer, and it actually is a very popular wedding place, and it's always the groom and the groomsmen, and then it's the major party house. And we don't even mind the parties, even though we've become so intimately aware of why Echo Ridge is named Echo Ridge, because, in fact, we're now really careful about what we talk about on our deck, because we don't want to blast it to all of Goodwin. But we've counted multiple times, 11 cars across the street. I talked to one of my neighbors who chose, you know, whatever, for whatever reason, not to come to the meeting last week or this week, living at the top of the street, and has counted more than once, 22 cars at a shot. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, when you have 51 beds in a five-house neighborhood, I mean, that's pretty congested. And there's another one being built that could easily be a short-term rental.
We actually have three more that could be.
Well, there, and then there's two more that are both second-family homes that may do that. So the congestion and the parking is a real issue. The other piece too, that is an issue, is that for the five that are existing on Echo Ridge currently, there's only one that has a property manager that is a Gerdwood, it's Glacier City Realty. So there's somebody in Gerdwood that you could call. Everybody else is offsite, and they're never onsite. These are more investment properties as opposed to second homes. So that's another issue. And as Kathy mentioned, you know, a lot of communities are dealing with this. This has happened in every ski community in the country. It's happened in any resort community. In Hawaii, I mean, my personal family, we had, we've been doing short-term rental out of our family home in Sausalito in the San Francisco Bay Area for 10 years, even before Airbnb was ever created, and it was how we were able to pay for the assisted living in the final days of my father's life. And so I'm grateful for that. But we had parking for eight people, we had an onsite manager, and we never ran into the problems that other. But Sausalito's now made it illegal to do short-term rental, anything less than 30 days. I don't know if any of you guys saw the news report two days ago about what Denver is doing for their short-term rentals. And they are requiring that you have to be an onsite manager, and are prosecuting three people as felonies for not being onsite rentals, saying that they are ginning the system. And Santa Monica has totally eliminated them. I mean, there's like some pretty draconian, or, you know, pretty intense stuff that's going on across the country, and a lot of people are really dealing with it. And I'm not saying that we go there. I mean, it's important to have these wedding parties. I mean, the guys that got kicked out of Chair Five, well, the next week, we had the same deal, and it was the 60th wedding anniversary. And these people came from all over the country, and they were families, and they were nice, and we didn't have the loud parties, had a little bit of speeding, but they were really actually pretty good. And there was another 14-person group that went to the house across the street, and they were disabled people, and they come every year, and, I mean, they were great. And, and so it's not about denying these people. I mean, we have just this beautiful place to live, and how great it is to share it. But we need to figure out how we can do it in a way that really works. And so there's got to be some middle ground somewhere, because when they're speeding up and down the streets, when they're partying till 4:00 in the morning, and sometimes they are partying till 4:00 in the morning, when they're so drunk that they're knocking over our stop sign, and parking 11 to 22 cars on the street and nobody can get through, I mean, it's, it's, it's not good. And, and then the other piece, which Mike had mentioned at the Land Use Committee, so we have 1,400 homes in Gerdwood, and over 400, 410 are short-term rental. You know, what's that doing for a long-term rental? Yeah, I mean, you know, there's some, it's a, it's a complex and a big issue that is kind of on our plate, but it's not only our plate, there's a lot of other communities across the country that are dealing with it that maybe we could look at and see what they're doing, and maybe we can find a successful middle ground. But, you know, it's a tough deal when, like Gabe couldn't even get into his driveway, or Kathy couldn't get up the street, you know, because all the cars were parked, and, you know, and those sweet French people that didn't understand English, didn't know what she was saying, like, I need to get through to get to my house. So, anyway.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So I'll speak a little bit to this. So in the, we have a housing working group that's a subcommittee of GPOS, and we've been looking at this, we've been looking at several issues, and we identified the proliferation of short-term rentals as one of the issues that we had to look at. So over the last few months, we've done a sort of general survey of other communities, and sort of found the range of solution, from banning it all, to having limits to how many, how many short-term rentals can exist within the neighborhood, and then to sort of much more relaxed things, which put them on a par with the way we, the way we regulate bed and breakfast, for example. So the municipalities, there's, you know, grooming houses, and motels, and hotels, and bed and breakfasts, there's a health and safety aspect to those, and we need to make sure we regulate it so they're reasonable, so they've got, they've got the appropriate level of fire inspection, you know, you don't have one parking lot for 12 bedrooms or 12 beds. And we do that for bed and breakfast. For whatever reason, short-term rental is basically completely unregulated. There is a requirement to pay room tax, and I don't know how well that's actually followed. I have an estimate. But, you know, we don't regulate it at all, and it's become, Echo Ridge is, and St. Moritz, I used to live on Echo Ridge, opposite, opposite Dale, and next to, next to Erin, in a house that we got kicked out of, so it got turned into a short-term rental. It worked out well for me, because we were, we were about to buy a place, but, so I've seen it from that side as well. I've seen the impact on the housing market, I've seen the number of long-term rentals decrease, and the quality of long-term rentals in this town decrease. And it changes the, it changes the nature of the community, it changes who can afford to live here. But just on the issue of neighborhood nuisance, it's, it's definitely, I think, become stronger, and it's, I've definitely, I've heard complaints, as I've been talking about this, and, you know, over a period of time, over the last few months, I've heard lots of people have approached me and complained about other parts of town as well. It's not quite the intensity of Echo Ridge because of the nature of the road and the number of short-term rentals in that area, but it's definitely become a bigger issue across the whole of the valley. And I think from, there is one thing which makes it slightly awkward, if we have, as Dale, Dale mentioned the numbers that, the other day, is we have something, depending how you estimate it, somewhere in the mid-300s to 400 short-term rental properties in the valley, and about 1,400 housing units, so around about 25, 30% of our capacity. In the whole of Anchorage, or the rest of Anchorage, I should say, it's like 1% or 2%. So it's not really a problem in the other parts of Anchorage, but it has become an intense, fairly critical problem here. So I'm going to mention Chris Shute, who's, you were officially title as executive director of?
Director of Economic Community Development.
Economic Community Development. So Chris is responsible for the Planning Department for Housing and a bunch of other departments within the community. And we've started discussion recently about this, and we actually had a call with a company that provided some data for us about the density of short-term rentals here. So I was going to actually ask Chris if he wanted to say a few, few words about what the range of kind of possibilities, or how we could, how we could approach this problem.
Well, it covers the whole gamut, as we heard the previous speaker.
Actually, do you want to come up to the, so people who are listening on the radio?
Yeah. The range of options is, it covers the whole gamut. And as the previous speaker highlighted, there are different jurisdictions that do it differently, and it's entirely, it should be a local decision that's specific to the conditions. But it can, it can be, it can take any form, and so to build off of your introduction, Mike, in addition to speaking to the data company, and he came away much more impressed with their data than I did, I will be honest, we're, we're able to learn a lot about these numbers, and about the presence of STRs, of short-term rentals, in the community. From there, you have a chance to look at locations, underlying zoning, number of rooms, and start to formulate a more complete picture about what the impact is to the community, and have that discussion fully informed about what kind of limitations, you know, might be considered. It's not a problem that has come to our attention in other parts of town, and in that way, Gerdwood is very unique, in many ways, Gerdwood is very unique. So this is a perfect, I think, topic of discussion for whichever subcommittee or subcommittees want to take it up. But both through my capacity in the Office of Economic and Community Development, and the departments that I oversee that perform municipal functions, I'm also on the board, I believe with John even, on the Visit Anchorage Board, or you want Visit Anchorage? Okay, I'm on the Board of Directors with Visit Anchorage, work very closely with Visit Anchorage, manage their contract with the municipality. So we've had them involved as well, because this will be an important discussion for them as, as one of the entities that's out there marketing Gerdwood as a place to come and have a 60th wedding anniversary. So, yeah, we want to stay involved and figure out what the best path forward is.
Thanks, Chris. Sorry, I've spoken a lot, I'm going to ask other people.
I wanted to ask, because I know you're intimately familiar with all of our zoning rules, like, so I think most of Echo Ridge is zoned like GR1, GR2, which is all our two-family housing.
GR2.
Most of it's GR2. So is there anything in there that would say that this isn't okay? Or, because it feels like what's happening now, it doesn't really meet the intent of what was written in the code for GR2.
I think that's a fair comment. I'm not sure if it's, if it's actually, I mean, the effect we were talking about, we were talking about commercial, commercial rental properties, I mean, they're rather businesses. And actually, maybe Chris is into more intimately, understands the planning rules than I do, but.
I would say intimately. So there's, there's multiple layers to remember in looking at this issue, and I, I can't speak with any authority on the Echo Ridge cases, because I'm not familiar with them besides hearing what I heard tonight. But there are certainly rules about the underlying zoning, and what the use or what the structure can be on the property. And I believe from your description, it sounded very similar to someone who has an accessory dwelling unit, which is an allowable use on a property like that. But what really raised my eyebrows was the number of advertised sleeping quarters or bedrooms. And now we're talking about something related to International Building Code or Residential Code. And that's something that's much different from zoning, it's the basic life safety standards that we build homes and buildings to in this community. So that one really raised my eyebrows, because I'm sure if Chief Weston had been around, she'd want more information, that's actually the number of beds where you have to start sprinkling your building. So there's multiple layers to, to consider here, and zoning is one of them.
Yeah, I think of, I think of Echo as one of the discussed, because I think if you were to develop those industrial lands that the area plan wishes to, you're going to find.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are other issues for future development, if possible, possibilities there for, for building housing that would benefit the whole of the community and not just.
Right. The hotel industry and lobby really are in place of, like, some of the bigger resort areas, to control this. And that's personally, maybe that's where, that's why we're, that's why we're, because they're taking beds away from the hotels, and hotels are a viable part of this community, that this anchor of this community actually, so. That's a good point. It's a big deal. And you brought up about the life safety, now that I think about it, it's a question. In all the zoning, everything in cities that, if an inspector came out and knew you were going to work with people in this house, they'd go, yeah. Different story, yeah.
I obviously do not speak for the resort, but what I have heard is that the resort at one level doesn't have a problem with short-term rentals, because they, I mean, as far as cutting into their business, where they have concern about short-term rentals is that their employees don't have any place to live, because they don't, because what's happened to the long-term rentals, and affordable housing as a result of some of the short-term rental. For, we have children, I mean, this is probably too many. For, we have children, I mean, this is probably two of my, we have a family that lives in Southern California that just went through the two earthquakes, and going through the earthquake here, and actually, electricity is presenting at work, like, we've been really working on our personal evacuation plan and all of our, what we need. And so parking and traffic and being able, and to get out of even the street is a concern. And actually, you know, we went down to have the work trucks and the MSTAR people, you know, the road was pretty blocked off. And, and I mean, and that wasn't even short-term rental, but to have, so I don't know, maybe there is some parking things that could happen sooner than later in terms of at least minimally parking on one side of the street, or, which in some parts of our street, I mean, Echo Ridge and then also St. Moritz could be kind of iffy. But, you know, that could happen sooner than later.
I think that's a great point. John's pretty familiar with this. We, we deal with similar parking, parking concerns on constrained roads, not related to housing, but related to Chugac State Park access. And we've had a limited run, and I think limited success, with the idea of actually being more, aggressive is the wrong word, more thoughtful about our signage and our enforcement of that signage, and the ability to, for residents to sort of self-police and report those violations. I don't know enough about Echo Ridge to know whether it can be signed, you know, one side or two sides for no parking, but it's certainly a note that I took.
Nice neighborhood, however, we do have a neighborhood that has excellent signs.
Great.
A oner problem, but it's, I mean, but the parking is an issue, and partly because all of these units can have so many people, they're the party houses.
Sure.
And so they have all the bridal parties or, you know, wedding parties, or they have, and, you know, so they get a lot more, I mean, the group that got kicked out were a total of 61 people, and not all 61 people were living on Echo Ridge, because we had 20 people at one house and the rest of them are in those units. But it, you know, I mean, it just is kind of a magnet for a lot of people.
When it comes to, to noise and, well, and trash occasionally, we also see elsewhere in town, we see a lot of trash issues from people who are staying three days. They're not going to be there during the dub days, they leave the, leave the trash outside unsecured. Some, obviously, only a few. But we still have that problem. It tends to, it tends to be focused around certain properties which are short-term rentals. So again, at the beginning of the meeting, when Chris described the secure trash regulations that showed the Anchorage Works, Anch Works at all for basically registering issues with trash, the same is true for noise as well. I don't know if the same is true for parking, I don't think. Although there are land use aspects to parking.
If it's a safety hazard, how long?
You're right. If it's a safety hazard, it's, it's an issue with fire department.
I've been waiting, and I've been fighting my mind to see how this all can, all could happen. And I can tell you definitively, there's many, many, many times that you could not have knocked a fire truck down that road.
Right.
You get snow and ice on the road, super show, there's no way to back down. As soon as a vehicle goes to back down, you're, you're ending up in someone's bedroom.
I mean, it might be worth the call then, you know, a non-emergency call.
I, I, yeah. You know, Chad would give his predecessor to you, I mean, they would, they drove, they rubbed down all the time doing stuff. I don't see the rigs welding down roads as much as we did then, making stuff, there's some, the parking thing was more enforced then. You know, it was a serious deal, you know, in your, you know, if the guys hit your car by their car, that's a, it's a blow. But now, people aren't sounding, there's, there's, there's been, the thing with Echo, from my point of view, and I see that it's, I mean, this isn't just me saying something to, to get your attention, it's a safety issue. Like, all the way around, it's a safety issue. Even in the summer, people go so fast down that road, there's kids at the bottom, people slam at that kid down the street, and you slam on your brakes, and that is your problem. It takes 57 feet to cover stuff. I mean, that is what it is.
Kids and dogs.
Molly, you got, I think you had your head up earlier.
There's so many issues with housing that you've talked about forever, but I think the big difference between, and we've always had rentals in Girdwood, the big difference now is the lack of property management. And why Anchorage is popular is because, you know, financial, you don't have to pay half the money to a property manager. And disclaimer, I have a duplex, a legal duplex, and I've done long rentals and short-term rentals in Anchorage. But I'm an onsite property manager, I don't have those problems now. But people, when they sign up for Airbnb or VRBO, say, how many people are in this neighborhood? How many parking spaces you have? I have one parking space for my apartment. If you try and book my place and show up with two cars, I tell you, you have to leave. I have one parking space. So we're just, we're miserable with all the absentee renters and without having a local contact person. You know, I have, on my street, there's a house that used to be Regent Valius and Foundations. Anytime there was a party, I mean, my neighbors and I, we would come, it was like five minutes after, we'd still call them and say, you know, there'll be a lot of people coming through the content of a party, and they would come and hear.
Yeah, that's something.
But with, with these, there's no one to call, it's an absentee property manager. An absentee, that's the difference. If there was somebody to call, you'd call them.
Yeah, sure, for rentals that are housing, you know.
You should be able to call the police, but the owners are accountable. If you call the fire department, it's for a $700 call-off or a fire department show up or an ambulance, the owner should be responsible if it's completely something that is wrong. Kind of like something in the housing, you can then use that part of the business.
Yeah.
A requirement that all short-term rentals have a local contact.
Yeah, that's a, that's something else you see in a lot of resort communities of there's a requirement.
So, because if you have a car stolen, you call somebody right then, it's a non-hazard issue. You say, hey, I have a car stolen. Sixteen.
Perhaps you're not going to solve it tonight, but are there any other comments you want to make?
Can I make one more?
No, I have a comment that I've seen, I used to live up on St. Johann. I know the issue with parking, and I know the issue with snow removal and emergency. My wife and I were always concerned that at some point, the fire truck couldn't get up there because they were parked on both sides of the road. It's a concern that we have to deal with, and we've got to come up with some sort of solution. We're trying to come up with a, right now, we can't even enforce parking through Whittier, so we're trying to work on that, and that's an issue we have to work on. You know, when you said before, you'd call the state trooper, and the state trooper'd come up, you know, and now we have a different enforcement mechanism. So we just have to work on it. It's like you say, we're not going to solve it tonight.
Sorry, Chris. That's all right. Just one shameless plug related to housing issues and public safety. One of the challenges that Girdwood faces, that Chugac Eagle River faces, and the Hillside faces, is the lack of secondary emergency access to or from the community. And that's been a, that's been a big issue, a big challenge for us when we look at, how do we as a city bond for finance construct roads? And particularly in the Hillside, you know, we're constrained by the fact that those are all outside of the road service area for Anchorage, and we can't build these kinds of roads. Well, just for purposes of preview, it's an issue that we're working on now, looking at a new method for identifying, bonding, and financing for those emergency secondary access roads in the communities that are outside the road service area, including Girdwood, Chugac, Eagle River, and Hillside. So you'll start to see and hear more about that as summer concludes. It is something that will require a vote, so you'll hear a lot of it leading up into the conclusion of this year and beginning of next year as we look ahead to the polls in April. So just to put that out there.
Chris. Any other comments? If not, we'll wrap this up. So I'll do a quick plug as well for the housing working group, I chair. So this is, this is probably our, our main topic at the moment, the last month or two. So we're going to keep looking at this over the next few months, and our intent is to actually sort of identify the problems and try and find a path that works for everyone. And, you know, it's important that we have, there's clearly a need for additional accommodation. And I think a lot of people, a lot of people live in the community because, you know, they can, they can have part of their house they can rent out short-term. So we're not trying to sort of crush it. We just want to make sure we find an optimal place for, for everybody.
When's your next housing meeting?
The next housing meeting is, I'm going to look at, Margaret will tell me when the next housing meeting is. It's the, I believe, the second Wednesday, the second Wednesday of.
That would be the 14th.
Should be the 14th?
14th, yes, it is the 14th.
But I can't remember if you said that you were going to have your next one in September instead of in August.
I think for housing, for housing, it was going to be 14th.
It'll be on our website.
It will be on our website.
www.muni.org.
And it's 14, 7 p.m. Yeah.
Very good.
That's right.
But Mike, I had a question for you.
Yeah, sure.
Earlier, you were mentioning perhaps adding this topic in some form to the muni manager meeting.
Yes.
And how would you like to?
I'd like to put it on there.
As, as it's stated on this agenda?
I think as.
Or do you want to give me language for that maybe tomorrow?
Either concern for, a concern about short-term rentals, or probably, probably something about, you know, potential regulation of short-term rentals.
Okay.
Okay. No other comments? I think that was perhaps our last item, so.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for everybody coming to the meeting.
Thanks for your time.